I call the word of this me and the common council with Sidney Hunningberg.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Well, my God, thank you for those that are here today and the decision to be with this council and the decisions that they make, that the decisions that we may make here are for the benefit of all citizens of Hunningberg, and for these things we ask in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
First thing is asking for approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Kissling.
Aye.
Bulte.
Aye.
Ware.
Aye.
Bounce.
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays.
Should have started out by saying that we do have two council members that are here remotely, so we'll be taking roll call on our votes this evening, too. Next, approval of claims.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
I'll second.
Got a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Kissling.
Aye.
Bulte.
Aye.
Ware.
Aye.
Bounce.
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays.
Okay, thank you. First thing on the agenda, we have Chief Kramer here to make a presentation regarding the firing range and lease that we have presently with the airport.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, I don't know if you guys were involved in the lease signing agreement with the airport as far as us getting the firing firearms range or not, but part of what's not in the lease and what I'm asking for approval from you guys is the permission to run basically a firearm safety course. I attended the meeting at the airport, was that two weeks ago, Phil?
Yes.
Two Mondays ago, I think.
Yeah, two months ago, two or three.
Brought it up to them to see what their, kind of what their opinion is on it prior to coming here for, prior to coming here, and they all agreed that it's kind of necessary, what we do. Trying to train citizens on how to handle firearms a little bit better and get them used to being able to shoot a firearm if we can. So, and that's, the addendum, I think, is attached. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Phil, but we would need this in order to run one of those firearm safety classes out there.
Yeah, that's correct, because the current arrangement, the lease arrangement with the airport authority specifically is limited to police and fire training, police and fire personnel training. And the police department is proposing a civilian firearms training, safety trainings course, and they would use, most of the coursework would be done at the station, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
But the actual firing would be done at the firing range, the actual firearms practice would be at the firing range, and so we needed an addendum to the airport lease that would allow that to take place, because right now it's restricted just to fire and police training.
So this will carry on until the end of 2025, and this will be added on 2020?
That's correct, it could be renewed with renewal. The city is responsible for public liability insurance, and it will hold harmless indemnify the airport authority for anything that occurs in connection with the, with the training and the activities conducted on that range, just as it currently is in the current lease.
Yes, and just to build off of that, so what I envision a course of this being would be a handgun course to start with, probably three hours in the evening during the week sometime, doing instruction at the station, going over, you know, different things down there, and then one Saturday morning when it's not so hot outside. Going down to the range and then actually going through and physically handling, you know, whatever pistol they bring.
Okay.
And then dry fire drills, and then actually shooting. It would be minimal as far as actually shooting, but it would be more so just on how to handle, safely handle a firearm, so.
I'm all for it, good, good deal.
And like I told the airport board, we want to try to keep it small just because of the instructors that we have available. I would want no more than two people per instructor, just because the safety is paramount.
Sure.
And part of the process to get through would be a background check, just as if we were going to hire them, and then prior to being on the range, we would give them a PBT to make sure that they're not intoxicated regardless if it's eight o'clock in the morning. So.
Hey, Chief, this is Jeff.
Yep.
Have you priced out what you feel like the cost to the participants going to be with the officer's time and the background check and some of those things for a course, or to participate in the course?
Uh, not exactly the amount of time that we would, would spend as far as background checks and, and supplies, but that was something that I would ask for, like a minimal fee to cover the range fees as far as supplies and stuff like that, so. But.
The citizen, the enrollees will provide their own.
They'll provide their own firearms, they'll provide their own ammo.
Everything else.
Ammo.
It's mostly time and instruction, public, public education, which is great.
Correct.
Absolutely.
And then we'll, we'll supply the targets.
Yeah.
We have several hundred already, but in order to get those, we have to order them, you know, four or 500 at a time, and we'll be able to take that money and hopefully be able to purchase range supplies from that.
Think it'll be thirty, forty dollars, something like that?
I don't know exactly what, you know, what we're looking at as far as fee goes. I've seen anywhere from twenty to forty on a, you know, a, two sessions like that, so.
Would that have to be added in a separate piece here, but it would be in the addendum, though, right?
No, this would be a separate ordinance, a separate ordinance that would authorize a fee, once, once it's determined what that fee would be, and Tom, I think he would like those fees to go into a non-reverting fund that could be used for police equipment and supplies.
Yeah, if we could purchase range supplies with that money, I don't want to put it anywhere else that.
We'd have to look into that, James.
Yeah, if we can, I would, I mean, that would be helpful, just so we can replenish those supplies that we use during that time.
Sure.
So.
We have to, we have to introduce this and go through the whole thing.
No, this is, right now he's just asking for your authority, or at least approval of this addendum to that lease. You, I don't know if you remember, but you approved the original lease.
Yes, we did.
And so now there's, this addendum needs to be approved, and then the chief will come back eventually with, with a fee that he thinks would be appropriate to charge the participants, and you'll approve that at that point, or you, he'll seek your approval. But this can be, just be done as a motion on the minutes.
And just to add to it, we're looking at probably later this year hosting one, and then say we get, you know, ten people signed up, we'll take six, and then we'll roll them four over into the spring, whenever it gets nicer, and we'll give them a call and see if they're still interested, and just keep a rolling tally of, a rolling list of who we've got available and who can still come, who's still interested, too, so. Cool.
Good job. I'll make a motion to approve the firing range development and lease agreement, the addendum.
I'll second any motion.
They've got a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Kissling.
Aye.
Bulte.
Aye.
Ware.
Aye.
Bounce.
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That microphone wasn't plugged in, by the way.
We heard you. Yeah, we, we're, we're kind of in a limited sound system here today, we're in the middle switching services over. This past Saturday was the fortieth anniversary of the Ull Pottery Club in the city of Hunningberg. We had a large group of people here at the Hunningberg Event Center for that auction show, celebration, lunch, and I spoke at that and attended that with my wife, and as part of that, same as we did last year, they asked to promote the Ull Pottery that I presented proclamation and put it in the record, so that's what we're here doing now. From the office of the mayor, whereas in 1848, two brothers, August and Louis Ull, immigrated from Germany to America in search of fortune, initially established a pottery business in Evansville, Indiana, but eventually relocated their operations to Hunningberg after discovering, discovering superior clay for firing, and whereas the company went through several name changes or ultimately became the Ull Pottery Company, renowned for its acornware, which were sold in, from Indiana to as far away as Florida till operations ceased in the 1940s, whereas established in 1985, the Ull Collector Society seeks to celebrate the rich history of Ull pottery, honors the legacy it left behind, preserve the surviving examples of its work, and whereas the Ull Pottery Collector Society has chosen Hunningberg, Indiana, to mark the fortieth anniversary of its founding, providing opportunity for enthusiasts across the country to come together, now therefore, I, Neil Alkins, Mayor of the City of Hunningberg, Indiana, issue this proclamation, hereby proclaim June 21st, 2025, as Ull Pottery Society Collectors' Day in the City of Hunningberg, and urge the community to acknowledge the valuable work of the society dedicated to preserving the legacy of Ull pottery, a significant part of the culture, cultural and historical fabric of Hunningberg and southwest Indiana. Your day signed, October, excuse me, June 21st of 2025. We also announced at the time the, the new mural that's coming up on Fourth Street on the overtime building, we call it, that's been kind of in the process of part of that alley activation, spending the rest of the money of that grant that was supposed, was the designated mural, we will include a piece of Ull pottery in the mural, as well as Hunningberg brick, there'll be some spools on there for film spools, as well as a tribute to Memorial Gem and directions to the gem, and meeting that really, what that grant was intended to do was make it a gateway to and from Memorial Gem to Fourth Street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Energy Superintendent, down at Rude Polar, you always have some fun pictures of them, I can share those with the media sometimes, so. With our new system, we'll be able to display those pictures up here as we do.
That'd be great.
I'd like to take some better pictures of you.
He might want to copyright it, too.
Start off with the gas department, did replacement, added one new service system. Well, we have several on file. Did change up seven old meters to the new census meters, kind of slow on that. We had two big projects come up, the gas department, I think, street department was taking out some curb on North Geiger, they noticed a gas smell, so we went over and investigated, we got out the maps, we kind of pinpointed to where, we got a four inch line running north and south in Geiger, there's a two inch line that was welded in to the four inch that went across the road to the west, that feeds all the houses along there, that line was put in in 1956, we kind of figured it might have been a weld failure when they welded the two inch into the four inch, because there wasn't really no procedure back in. It's welded, covered it up, hope it held, it did for a long time. So after we dug down, we actually found a bolt-on flamed valve that's been buried for many, many years, that's where we found a leak, there is a gasket between, when they bolted in, there was a gasket there, over time that gasket deteriorates, that's why it's illegal to put anything bolted into the ground, it's all got to be welded, all your valves, all your taps have got to be welded now on your steel lines, so that's what we found, I think you can see a picture of it, that, what we did, dug up. So to keep everybody in gas service, we had to weld, we dug it up, as you can see, the big pit, we had to dig carefully to not further damage the lines, we had to weld line stoppers on each end of the four inch, had to weld a line stopper on the two inch, you can see the red hose, that is the bypass to keep the gas flowing to the two inch, to keep everybody in service on the west side of that Geiger. What that apparatus does when we weld the line stopper on, it actually drills down and cuts the steel pipe, it pulls the steel piece out, it runs a big rubber stopper down to stop off the gas, in the meantime, gas goes through the red hose onto the two inch to keep everybody in service, so it takes some time to do all that, but that's what had to be done. So then the next picture is the finished product, we take the apparatus off, we put caps on the line stopper, we wrap it, so you don't have any exposed metal, and then we backfill it with some full fill. So it's quite a process we had to do, but it's all fixed now, put back, like I said, that line was put in in 1956.
How long does that take to do that, like how long did this take?
We were there mostly a week.
A week, wow.
Sounds like two hours.
Sounds like a couple of weeks. Oh, I had no idea, I mean, my gosh, yeah.
It's very hard of the day, as you can see the big pit.
Yeah.
Without damaging.
Hitting things.
Hitting things and damaging.
Because you don't know what's in there.
Well, and that makes sense, then, to put those.
Very careful in time to get it all, had like a whole day there.
I think it makes sense to put the line stoppers in, because I thought, oh, gosh, people maybe wouldn't mind to be without it for a couple hours, but a week is a long time.
Just to weld the line stopper fittings on, then you got to, you got to chip all the old coating off, you got to chip all that off, to the bare metal to weld your line stopper fittings on, which takes a lot of time, then you got to put your apparatus on, do all the drilling out, plug it, so, you know, it's three, four days.
Looks good.
So quite.
Looks good.
Then, the next big project come along, back, a month, a couple months ago, we had storm damage, OFS building, they're moving production to Plant Nine out on 12th Street. One of the pieces of equipment they're going to move there, they want to set right over our old service line, steel line, on the west side of the building, plus they're going to up production there, so the gas meter that is presently there, no longer big enough, so we had to relocate our gas service line, which had to be steel, two inch steel, so we had to order the pipe in, we strung the pipe out, ended up being about 200 feet, and we had to weld all that together onsite, the natural meter setting is what you see is what we did in our shop, our welder welded all that, there's a lot of fittings in there, took three to four days to do all that welding, because you got to make sure everything's straight, when you put your meter in, everything, that's up, it's not crooked, it's got all we got to do, straight, uniform, and as you can see, that's quite a, quite an operation there, that took mostly another week.
An hour.
So we're ready, we got the meter in, so we're ready to install the meter when they're done inside with their work, so we're all ready on our side. Once we do that, then we got to dig up the old service line, it's a steel, we got to cut it off, weld stopper on it, so it's going to take a little time to do it, but as you can see, the cost is covered by the company to do all that, because they requested it, even though if we'd had to do it, it'd be quite expensive if we had to do it on our own. So, any questions on the gas? Moving on to the electric, we finished up two residential underground projects this month, one of them we had problems in storms, so we put that one underground, the other one was in St. Henry, the building is now gone, it's just a bare field, but the lines run over the top of the building to serve a residential customer, which you don't do that anymore, but back when it was built, that's the way it was put up, so we had to make sure it could still serve that customer by the time they wanted to tear the building down, so they did get that all done. Then we did set two poles on Sycamore Street of building two new houses in that area, we didn't have no distribution lines running there, so we set a pole, set a transformer, so that took a little time. Then we did, on the picture, we set four temporary poles for the new Popular Ridge project coming in the near future, they needed temporary, so we pulled out four poles, set them, run lines, so I can supply their construction trailer, so that's all done. Then we did set three new ductile iron poles down by the city park, there's an area there where we usually have problems in big storms knocking the circuits out, so we're going to go underground, we set some new poles, got the poles set, we ain't got the conduit of wire ruined yet, but that's an area that really needs some attention to prevent them trees knocking the circuits out, it's last two out of three storms, that's where we've had the problems, so hopefully we can eliminate that when we get that completed.
Going up to hell. Going up to hell.
Going to hell.
Resolve that issue.
Then, we've got, got a quote on some underground wire, you can see, it's a, the approval, $20,575 from Brownstown. Part of that wire is for Popular Ridge, could be completed, we're running a wire, the other wire is for stock, you got a number two and a one op, Keyrite, that is the only company that is allowed to sell the brand of wire underground, that's why there is just one quote, lead time has come down on that wire, it used to be set a long time out, but we're able to get it now. So it's like approval. The one out underground is for Popular Ridge, the big amount, what the quote is for 2,500 foot reels, but that's a random, like I said, whenever the operator hits the button, cut the line, or cut the wire in production, it may be 2,550 feet, 2,600 feet.
Yeah.
Depends on.
Whatever fills the reel.
Yeah.
Pretty much.
Do you want approval for up to 23?
Yeah, because it may vary, it's not going to be exactly 2,500 feet on a reel.
I'll make a motion.
But the price, the price per foot is going to be the same.
I'll make a motion not to exceed 23,000.
I'll second it.
Got a first, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Motion carries.
Kissling.
Aye.
Bulte.
Aye.
Ware.
Aye.
Bounce.
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays.
I'd like permission to get quotes on single phase pad mount transformers, we're getting kind of low on them, lead time, not too bad, price has gone up considerably.
Yeah, can we even get Hercos or anything, or?
Actually, we can now, Hercos.
Oh, yeah, they changed around, huh?
Yeah, it's just, I think the supply.
It's caught up?
Well, not caught up, but getting closer.
In the same, in their same zip code, anyway.
Yeah, so it'd be some single phase, yes, for residential mainly, residential single phase pad mounts.
I'll make a motion to approve the seeking quotes on pad mount.
I'll second.
Okay, you got a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Kissling.
Aye.
Bulte.
Aye.
Ware.
Aye.
Bounce.
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays.
Thank you. What was your carry?
And then, I think Jeff, you mentioned something about a little summary on the wooden poles, the cost of them over the last six years, so I included that, I think everybody got it, didn't they?
Yes.
Yes.
That's a little summary of the poles, the cost, as you can see on the 40-foot, how price went up, now it's come back down, because in 23, the, 22, 23, the rural broadband grant money was there from the federal government to run fiber through the rural communities, so 90% of your poles in the rural communities are 40-foot poles, because back in the days there was no fiber, no, no cable, so we all went for 40-foot, but like in town here, 90%, 45-foot, because back in the day we had the old copper communication lines, now we got fiber lines, copper communication lines, and they all got to have a little separation. You can see how the price went up, now the price is coming down some, and the lead time is, last month I got approval to get wooden poles, got them in last week, so three weeks we had our wooden poles, we're, back in 22, 23, it was probably six months by the time we could get wooden poles, because everybody was ordering for the rural broadband grant money, all the private contractors were setting poles out in the country to run their fibers.
And there's been a lot of changes in the treatment, I think, too, over the last.
Yeah, they had to go to a new treatment.
Whether they use.
Poles last 40, 50 years, 30 years.
Supposed to.
How well they're treated. Any questions on that, Jeff?
Uh, no, that's the kind of the starting point on the data, I think, just wanted to, wanted to see what kind of trends, you know, like you can see on the 45-foot poles, they've gone from 366 to 706, so nearly double in six years. And then, if you just, if you scrap out the middle years where the price was elevated and go from 341 to 584, not quite double on the 40-foot poles, just wanted to see that kind of information and be able to tell if we're, if we're, you know, collecting the right amount of money for maintaining those, knowing that we're going to have to replace them over a period, over a period of years, and estimating down the road what we can expect those costs to be.
But right now, our, our poles, there may be three communication companies on one pole, so we're getting three times, we're getting payment from three different communication companies for just the one pole, plus our main use for the electric.
See.
And the pole lasts 30 years, 40 years.
And the ductile iron ones are significantly more, I assume, they're, or the iron ones are getting steel poles, whether.
Yeah, they're about three times, but.
In the right environment.
Right environment, they're up to 120 mile an hour winds, put normal wind load on them.
And they'll, and you can put them in the crappiest of ground, I guess.
All back, we had a vehicle hit one out by Pam's house, didn't break the pole, it was a ductile, I don't know if you remember that?
Yeah. We kept our power.
And wooden pole probably would have snapped, we had a ductile on it, that's one of the main lines.
Took the hit.
Took on.
Took a hit, so.
Good.
Any questions on that?
Back to the gas.
What's that?
This meter, this meter thing you did for OFS or whatever it is, when you said you billed them for the time and take to do this, I mean, did you, is that our rate or does that a rate like a, somebody else would come into town to do it?
It's our rate that we got to charge.
We would save them a lot of money by using our rate, kind of.
Yeah, I think Clark County's got a rate that we charge.
Okay.
For accidents, like police report accidents, and we got a certain, we got a set rate.
Those have been set, any adjusted over a period of years?
Yeah, it's adjusted yearly.
Because it, it changes.
But we're saving them money with our in-house welder guys, what I'm asking, correct?
Big time.
Just checking, thank you.
Big time.
Good point.
Yeah, just to mobilize somebody else's.
Saving the company, let's save us, too.
The mobilization fees by morning, he makes it a day, so.
Well, we appreciate that, and, okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Looks good.
Good job.
Thank you.
Water Superintendent Jerry Austin.
I would want to make a, a note on the level of service in Hunningberg, my brother-in-law contacted me today, he's back in power, he's been out four days.
He's been out four days in Pennsylvania.
Pennsylvania?
Yeah, on the outskirts of Philadelphia, four days.
Due to a storm?
Yeah.
Or heat?
Saw the storm, a storm, four days. Man, it's a long time without power. But it's ninety-something degrees.
They'll back the ice again for your refrigerator.
My phone goes crazy when ours is off for twenty somewhere.
Oh, okay.
Well, we'll jump into distribution. Uh, we had two new services installed on South Sycamore Street. There's two new single dwelling homes being built there. We had a service line replacement, uh, one ten West Veterans Parkway due to a copper issue. Uh, I did bring that up at a past meeting, that was when we were doing that water main replacement there on Walnut Street. We had to pull off that to take care of that leak. We put a, a small repair clamp on that service line, uh, just to stop the leak and then to come back to get Walnut Street done, so we were out of the way of the pavers. And then we had to, of course, go back and we replaced that whole service line due to the whole, due to the condition of the copper that was there. So we took care of that this past month. We had a faulty air valve on our two-ton dump truck that, uh, we usually try to do all of our own truck maintenance that we can. Help save the city money. We've got employees that are capable and have certifications to do it. So anytime we have, uh, things like that come up, we usually take care of it in-house. We had a Indiana Rural Water Association Expo at the city park this past month. Uh, we did, we, every year we go down there and help them set up for the expo. And then that is a one-day event. We also attend that expo for our CEUs for our water license. We had a few more backflow devices that were tested this month. Their certification's last one year, so we try not to, if we go out there and we, when we're testing some, if we test one, it starts three or four months on it, it just keeps taking less and less away from them. So we try to let those run close to their year, that way we're not overlapping certifications on those backflow devices. And then, uh, we had a water meter damaged by a semi turning into a lot. So we did have to go out there and we had to rebuild that whole meter set. The, uh, the tire actually dropped down in it and cracked the meter, uh, unfortunately. I don't know who semi it was, you could just tell it was a dual tire track from a semi, so, uh.
Pretty far off the road, isn't it?
It fair, yeah, fairly. So we, we took care of that and we set a, we, we set a still post there, so.
There you go.
I don't want to slow it down.
We're gonna, we're gonna try and prevent that from happening again, that's for sure. And then, uh, OFS Plant One, we, uh, had to do some work on their meter service. We went out there, uh, to shut their water off so they could do some work on their side. We found that our valve to shut the meter off was frozen. Upon further investigation, we found that that water service, the potable water service line was coming off the fire service line, which, um, used to not be illegal, but now anytime we find anything like that, it has to be removed. There's no safety concerns about it, but, uh, with AWWA laws and standards with IDM, we have to keep those separate. So we did a quite a bit of potholing out there with services with our hydro excavator. There's a lot of underground electric, uh, there's a lot of private fiber for Farvest, OFS, as well as private electric as well. Gas sewer, everybody's out there. So we spent, uh, we spent a few days out there potholing those utilities and then had a company come in and bore a new two-inch service line across the road to prevent, uh, digging through the pavement and causing any damage to a heavily trafficked road. And then from there, we, uh, we did spend a couple of days working with the street department to locate utilities at Seventh and Van Buren. They've been doing quite a bit of work up there with some, uh, storm drainage, getting ready for, uh, that Seventh Street there to be repaved. We had a couple of services up there that were abandoned that needed to be pulled off the main as well, so we took care of that and removed two services up there during all that construction. And then, uh, with all the storm damage we've had, the ground's finally been dry enough. We've been able to get in some places and get some downed trees taken care of. So we had quite a few up down at the South Water Tower, uh, located over there by South Ridge. It's a heavily wooded area and it seems like every time the, the wind blows, we end up with trees on the ground. Other than that, the filter plant, uh, we've been performing just preventative maintenance on our actuators in the water treatment facility. There's, uh, thirty-eight valve actuators that electronically turn valves that are tied into our SCADA system. It is an automated system. Uh, so as the system runs through its automation and valves need to open and close, that is what does it versus a human out there doing it. That being said, though, our plant is set up to where we can manually run our water plant if we ever do lose power or anything like that, so. We've been, uh, taking care of those. And then also with the filter plant, I didn't have it, uh, in here. But we did, with the filter issue that's been brought up that we're working on with Commonwealth Engineering, we did have, uh, Tonka Water that is also known as Krida. They came out last week and met with myself and, uh, the engineer on the project, John Wetzel. And, uh, we have all the information we need and all the drawings and all the specifications where they're getting that ready, set up to be sent out to bid. So that is still moving along as scheduled and, uh, we'll be having that sent out to bid here, I'm hoping by the end of July. So just give you guys an update on that to know where we stand. And then, uh, other than that, our metering system, we, uh, we're waiting on our last shipment of large diameter meters and I was just told by our distributor this month that we will see them the, the middle of July. So I'm hoping, as I said before, those are kind of hard to get changed out without making arrangements with the, uh, industries. A lot of those are in the larger industries, so, um, we usually, those waters shut down for at least a half hour to an hour at a time. Those are kind of hard to muscle in there. So, uh, we'll continue to do that. We're hoping to have our metering system completely wrapped up on census by this fall.
Great.
Very good.
Very good.
Other than that, that's all I have.
I was in another community and I saw, happened to see water meter guys, like one driving, one helping out of the truck.
Oh, yeah.
They bet, yeah. Ours, this is nice to be more efficient.
It is. It's very efficient and the, uh, the digital side of it, where we're able to reach out to homeowners and let them know where they have issues prior to their bill is, uh, is nice too. I know we're, everybody's always thankful to be able to catch that sooner than later and have a high water bill, so it is a good system.
Yep.
Well, it's a pretty, uh, you've been doing some painting too.
Yes, yes, we have. Yeah, those, uh, I don't know if you guys, I know we talked about that with our part-time summer help. I don't know if you've been out, we've been trying to hit the, uh, I was gonna call them the local hotspots or just the, the, the main traveled roads at first. But they are, they're, they're doing very well. Those two young boys are, they're, uh, they'll be seniors this next year. And, uh, they, uh, they're still, they both play basketball, they're working out in the morning for dawn patrol at school and they, uh, they're still trying to put in as many hours here as they can. They stay till five or six o'clock in the afternoon, since they're not coming until later in the day to, to work and get those hydrants taken care of. So it's, uh, it is nice to see, it's, I was.
They're looking good.
I was, uh, in town today and driving around and seeing quite a few of them. It's, it's nice to see the facelifts that they're getting. It's been well overdue, so.
Absolutely, yep.
Yeah.
But thank you, thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney Phil Snyder?
I have nothing.
Director Tom Dippel?
I have nothing.
Any counsel items?
Fourth Friday's coming up this day.
Fourth Friday, yeah, it's Friday.
It's coming.
Is it Friday?
Twenty-seven.
It is, yeah, this, this fourth Friday.
So I hope I see, I hope we have a good turnout and hope it's cooled down by then. I'm sure it's supposed to.
I'd have to test out the fire hydrants.
Yeah, there you go.
Close the people.
Well, if, uh, we have citizen items, I know Janet said something.
I went to the event this morning with Muffins with the mayor. And one thing I learned is that we are living in a community now that we are, there's a lot of collaboration between states or between cities and counties. So we're very lucky. We need to really highlight those important things here in Honeyburg especially, about that nice leadership that has that collaboration. It's a good thing. Then I also noticed, noted too, that our police department has been doing outstanding in responding to accidents. There was just an accident yesterday and they got to it very quickly to secure the scene and to make sure the traffic was flowed around and to protect people there too. And then, as you guys had seen, Donny Heim's, um, information with the hoarding, very detailed, really good, a lot more problems than I realized would actually happen. I guess my question is, and this probably is for Phil, um, on these ordinances, when it's like one, one fifty, zero point zero eight one, for each infraction, is that a fine or is it overall fine?
It technically could be a fine for each violation of each, uh, of various sections under a code, but typically, uh, what the code enforcement does is they, they fine for, one fine for each day. They, they don't fine each offense. There could be, there could be ten offenses there on that one. Uh, but if they're not, if they're, if they don't respond to the, the notice to correct, then a fifty-dollar fine hits the first day and I think it's a hundred dollars per day thereafter.
Okay, okay, thank you, that is clarified. And then the next thing is, maybe we need to think about the, all the proclamations that are coming through are wonderful. Is there a way for us to maybe display them in the city so that when people are walking around? Because usually the proclamations, we just take them and we just take them with our group, but it doesn't really become visible to everybody else.
Yeah, we do, we, we, we do post all them on Facebook. So we do archive them there, uh, as far as, I don't know where we put them.
Do we put them on the website, our city website?
Uh, well, they're on there as part of the minutes, uh, so like the proclamation you'll have here, we'll, you know, uh, Amy will take care of posting that and, and, and with the minutes, so, yeah. We could do, consider something like that. We've got, we've been doing a lot more, uh, just to recognize the not-for-profits and other groups and people, businesses. Even done a couple of businesses in the last year, uh, more for less for their fiftieth or celebration, those kind of things.
You kind of need a visual to be able to see and recognize, so, yeah.
I know, I know the king's hung it up in her living room. Which I found surprised, even though I spelled her name wrong, said to redo it, so, but, uh.
That's it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Janet. Would it be a render anytime, focus render what the sign's gonna look like in the alley? Yeah, we're gonna do a, um, yeah, we're gonna do a press release on it and try, we're gonna have an article done with the, uh, interview with the, uh, artist coming out of Louisville, does a lot of stuff around Churchill Downs and, and, uh, does a lot of things for Kroger and some stuff up in Chicago. Art of Casey has a, a website, has a Facebook page as well as a, uh, he has every social media thing you want, you want to find out. Instagram was the other one. Uh, he has a lot of pictures on there. Okay. It may not look exactly like the rendering, but it'll be close and that's one reason why we kind of thought, I don't want somebody to say, well, I thought that flower was red and now it's blue, you know? We have some of those people, once you get them out there. So we were kind of like, you know, it's, I can show, I'll, I'll share with you. That'd be great. Tried to, uh, really colors, he did a lot of flowers in the background. The reason is trying to match the colors that are presently in that alleyway, with the red and the lights and then, and everything that's there, so. Okay, we have any, any other items or we have motion, we entertain a motion to adjourn? Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
We got a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries?
I have some light going, second.
Boy, you don't know.
Oh, okay. Kissling.
Aye.
Boltie.
Aye.
Ware.
Aye.
Bounce.
Aye.
Fairon.
Aye.
Five ayes, no names. All right, thank you. One, Roger, in this meeting, the common council at six fourteen, thank you.
Thank you.